We're going live to our reporter in the field from Ohio where he went to witness the totality of an eclipse. So before we'll start the meeting, I guess we'd go ahead and get your take on what you saw.
It was fantastic. I'm so glad I came. We had a great time. The weather couldn't have been better.
Well, good. Good, good, good. So for those of you that are in here today, we really worked closely to work with our post commissioners who's wives are teachers to rearrange our meeting schedule for the work sessions that would be clear spring break so that all three commissioners could be present. And then we rescheduled it to the day of the eclipse when Commissioner Tate has been planning a trip for five years probably to go and witness. So he's on the phone if you haven't already. And I'm assuming, what town was it again in Ohio?
Troy, Ohio.
We can all Google that and figure out where in the world Troy, Ohio is. So, good.
Just on the date.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and get the work session kicked off now that we've got everybody present. And we'll get everything going. We'll rearrange our agenda just a little bit. I know we're waiting on somebody to arrive, so we'll get the order mixed just a tiny bit. If you've looked at it, I know that item number one is the discussion about capital improvement and special tax district. We'll explain what that is when we get through to discuss it. But we'll move that to the last item that we've got and we'll kick off with spring sports updates and let Brian kind of give us an update on where we're at with what's going on in the weekend.
First off the gate. Oh, yeah. So we've got 640 kids playing T-ball, baseball, and softball at the rec. So we're extremely busy. We were off last week for spring break, but we'll start back games this evening and basically play games Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, all the way leading up to just about when school's out. First this, or in the last month, we did the opening day ceremony at the high school, which was great. Couldn't ask for a, it was kind of sketchy there for a minute, but we were able to get it in with the help of the high school and the parents, the high school parents running the concessions, just did a jam up job and got everybody in. And we played games at the rec that Saturday. We got all the games in, the fields were playable. And then, so we're playing baseball for this month and into May. And then, starting in May, we'll start registering for football. We'll register for football and we'll start getting teams put together probably around the end of June and we'll start getting ready for football season. So one sport ends and the next before it begins. So, yeah. Also with that later, the month, we should have to pull open by Labor Day. That is the goal. We've got most-
Memorial Day. Memorial Day. You want to open it, close it, or say it before it is.
We've got most of the prep done on as far as painting and stuff goes. Eric does. And once we turn the pumps on, start putting water in it, then we'll know for sure if it's gonna, it's gonna last another year. So, Margaret, Frank Ross.
Good. Hopefully, this will be the final one we have to. We're trying to get all that information finalized. Can you, Rick, talk with questions?
Got a son about play log area?
Move through the meeting to get us there. Another item we had on the agenda for tonight, and I know it's spring and we've already had the first time where they were already calling for the potential of severe weather that might hit our area that thankfully we've stayed south of us and we were able to dodge. But I'd ask Mark if you put together a presentation, just kind of go over spring weather preparedness from the emergency management side. So, Mark, you want to go ahead and let you get the board up to date on that?
Well, thank you and good afternoon. I put together a little PowerPoint presentation to talk about our spring weather preparedness, what we do and what you as a citizen or employee of Pickens County can do to protect you and your family. So, make a slide if you can. There's a little transition issue here. Maybe just change to EMA Director after my name. Now, Mason.
Well, I'd like to like five thousand percent.
That was about my issue. I couldn't get it straightened out. The spring weather hazards we tend to have here in North Georgia are listed here. Thunderstorms, lightning, tornado, heavy rainfall, and flooding, high winds, wildfires, and hurricanes. Next slide, please. Thunderstorms, we know that a thunderstorm can start out small, can grow to much more damaging effects or impacts on our communities. They can turn into tornadoes, which can be very devastating depending on the strength of that tornado as it comes through. Large hail, damage to vehicles and homes, roofs, things like that with hail. Severe winds, we tend to have a good bit of that. And this year, we've had a lot of high wind advisories. We'll talk about that later as we get to that bullet point. And then flooding, heavy rains. We've noticed we have specific areas of the county that have, are prone to flooding. So water over the roadways, washed out culverts at times, things like that that happen during the flooding. Even in the urban, more urban setting, the cities, roadways, just a simple clogged up storm drain can cause a flooding or ponding of water on the roadway that can make it dangerous to dry. And then lightning. Lightning, of course, is usually included in any thunderstorm. It can be more prevalent in stronger thunderstorms and it is very deadly along with the damage it can do by hitting objects. Over 280 fatalities occur in a year from thunderstorms and their related hazards. So it's very devastating to start with a thunderstorm and see where it goes to be even worse conditions. Next slide. Watches and warnings. There's a lot of confusion amongst people about what a watch and a warning means. A watch means that the conditions are prevalent for something to form. A thunderstorm warning means one has been sighted by a train spotter or has been radar indicated. With the technology today, they can actually see the intensity of the storm on the radar and turn that into a warning to make sure you take action. So, you know, watch, be prepared. You know, warning, take action. Watch carefully, keep them close out on the weather when they issue a warning. Watches usually last for three to four hours at a time. Warnings are usually immediate. They're within the next 15 to 20 minutes, you're probably going to get the impacts of that storm. Next slide. Lightning, do's and don'ts of lightning is very important to think about. You should move indoors first time you hear thunder or see lightning. You should also stay indoors at least 30 minutes after you hear the last type of thunder for safety reasons. Where you should move to is a sturdy house, building, or car with a roof. Don't retreat to dugouts in the areas of sports and parks. Sheds, pavilions, picnic shelters, and other small structures, they don't give you the protection of a larger, heavier built structure. And then electronics, telephones, such things like that can carry the electricity and can end up shocking you. So not a good idea to use electronics. Wireless electronics may be a little safer, but wired electronics, no. And then under trees and in swimming and in lakes and rivers and streams, all that waters conductive electricity. So you stay away from that during a thunderstorm or lightning. Tornadoes, unfortunately, Georgia is now considered part of the New Dixie Alley. So we have roughly 26 or so thunderstorms a year in Georgia. I mean, 28 is, I'm sorry. And they usually mostly occur in late winter or spring. They transition between cold weather to warm weather, which is what we're going through right now. And then in the fall, when we go through transitions to warm weather to cold weather as winter begins, we see the most of those stronger storms happen with the cold fronts and warm fronts come through. Next. And again, warnings and watches. This was reversed, so don't get confused by that. A warning, this means a tornado is imminent. Take shelter now. Protect yourself right now because it's been seen. And with the technology they have today with radar, they can tell how close it is to you. You notice a lot of the TV stations can actually name streets and communities in their path predictions of where that storm is going to be and within a few minutes of when it arrives at your location. So warning is one to take immediate action for. Watch, of course, is means that there is conditions that can cause a storm or storm to produce such warning. So that one is to be prepared. Next slide. Flooding, turn around, don't drown. Driving through flooded streets or flooded areas can actually float a car and up to six inches can possibly begin a vehicle to lose steering control. About a foot of water can cause a full sized vehicle to float and then two feet can sweep it away. So if you're coming across water crossing a roadway, don't drive through it. There's another reason why you don't want to drive through it. If you click the next Chris. This, the picture on the right is, it happened this year and it's washed out culvert. And as you can see on that picture on the right, that pavement is undermined. The weight of a car driving over that can cause it to collapse and your car goes down into the hole. So as water is coming across that during the storm, you may not see that there's roadway underneath that water. So you can't judge what's happening under the water. So be careful of that, driving through any water crossing over the roadway. And the faster it moves, again, it can sweep you away, your car. High winds, we've had a good bit of that this year. I think I've heard the National Weather Service talk about 30 to 60 mile an hour wind gusts more this spring than I've ever had recently. These winds cause trees and power lines to come down, damage to roofs and structures, and blow people's yard goods into their neighbor's yards if they don't take care of them, move them, and protect them during these high wind conditions. High winds and wildfires don't mix either because it can spread or file very quickly. Next. These are some pictures from, I believe this was Tate Cemetery during a storm a year or so ago. This was primarily straight line winds. You can tell by when you go out to look at these areas that all the trees are laid down in one direction. It's usually straight line winds or downburst. With a tornado, they're usually squirreled, trees laying in different directions and a lot of twisting off of limbs. You can see the damage in the higher tops of the trees. Next slide, please. Brushing wildfires, there's been quite a bit of that this year too in Pickens County. As we begin to change from winter to spring, the atmosphere changes to the point where we're very dry, less humidity in the air. And that, on top of high winds, which we've had a good bit of, can spur fires to get out of hand. So we tell the citizens, we keep them through social media, at different various ways to let them know that it's dangerous to burn. But until a burn ban is actually created to where it's unlawful to burn, they continue to burn. So this is one of a couple of weeks ago. This is Pickens County, part one, right here. Next slide, please. High fire danger alerts. This is another year that I think I put out more of these in the mornings as soon as the National Weather Service puts them out. They're usually about 3:00, 3:30 a.m. As soon as I'm up and moving, I usually send these out to our executive briefing at the email distribution list that we have high fire conditions for the day. It just recommends that you don't burn and also put that on social media. And then, of course, burn bans. If it really gets bad and the county's seeing a lot of fire get out of hand, the fire marshal will create a burn ban and we'll communicate that out also. State of Georgia creates a burn ban through the month of May, through the month of September. And that's mainly reasons for poor air quality and smoke dispersion. Next slide. Hurricanes and inland tropical storms. We've all seen these and we give a lot of advance warning on most of these. We know they're coming, they talk about them for up to a week before they hit landfall. And then you'll see on the right hand side here, that's the cone of uncertainty is what the National Weather Service calls it and the Hurricane Center calls it. Anywhere within that cone with the white outline balloon there is where that hurricane could end up going after Kids Landfall. So it doesn't follow exact paths. Nature doesn't exactly follow the rules. And so we have a lot of impacts from hurricanes, inland tropical storms here in Georgia because we have them either come down on the East Coast, Savannah to Brunswick, or out of the Gulf and come up through Florida. Next, next slide. What does EMA do to prepare and monitor? Well, this is a picture of the EMA Office, EOC, Emergency Operations Center, just a week or so ago, with a National Weather Service briefing. And they have storms coming and approaching and they cover, National Weather Service Atlanta covers 90 counties, over 156 in Georgia. So a lot of times that we're told the impacts may address us here in Pickens County, but like Chris said earlier, that storm ended up going, splitting and going around this northwest corner of Georgia got some and South Georgia got the worst. And that was the one where we had conyers got hit by tornadoes. We're also planning to do some training is one of the ways we can do that in the EOC and with our partners that come sit with us when we have activation. And our primary activations include the following people. EMA, Public Safety, E-911, Pickens County Sheriff's Office, Pickens County Marshal's Office, Pickens County Fire and Rescue, Pickens County Public Works. And then depending on the event we have, whether it's larger, long term flooding, tornado activities, things like that, we may call in additional administration reps from the county to help us keep track of what's spent, time spent for people working in the field. So we'll ask finance, the Texas District's Office, the HR to maybe come sit with us and help us document. Because if we get a presidential declaration for a disaster, we've got to provide a lot of paperwork and documentation in order to prove what we spent so we can possibly get reimbursement back. And then additional partners, depending on the incident and event, we may call in the cities, the municipalities, our other partners, Red Cross, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, Georgia State Patrol, Public Health, et cetera. Next slide. What can you do to prepare? One of the things you need to do, everybody needs to do to make sure they're prepared for any kind of storm disaster is to build a kit. You need one for your home, one for your car, one for work. Make a plan. What are you and your family going to do? What's your office, your department's going to do during a storm? A lot of our county employees work outdoors and they're out deployed across the county working outside. We need to communicate with them, make sure they know what's coming. And then teach and practice your plan with your family and that goes also for work, goes also for EMA. We'll do some exercises to make sure we're prepared and ready to go and work our plans. Things to think about in addition is if you have pets, you've got to care for them in a disaster. Most people won't leave their homes if they can't take their pets with them. So in case of having to leave their home and go to a shelter or something like that, you need to be prepared for pet and your pets. Tech ready. Make sure that your tech equipment is charged, your phones are ready to go. You've got chargers to take with you so that you can charge it when you do, if you do have power wherever you go. Older adults, you may have things, special medications, prescription glasses, oxygen requirements, things like that that they may need if they have to leave their home. And then, of course, prescriptions for anybody. And then food and water. And you need to think about food as non-perishable items that you can take with you. And you need to have about three days worth of supply in just in case until things settle down and businesses reopen and more commodities are available. Build a kit. I'm not going to go through all this list of things, but these are some of the things you need to have in your kit. Battery hand crank radio, such as a weather alert radio, so that you can get information about what's going on. Flashlight, first aid kit. Helmet. Everybody asked why a helmet? Well, if you've listened to the TV weatherman a lot lately, they have talked about in a case of a thunderstorm or tornado, even a bicycle helmet, something that you can put over your head as you go to your safe place in your home, that in case the roof comes down, you're protected. Mask and after COVID, I think we've all got a healthy supply of N95 masks to have just in case we need. And a can opener. You may have to open those cans that you've got on your shelf in order to survive. So manual can opener, electricity may be out. Next. That's just more. More stuff on there. Non-perishable food items. Water, one gallon per person per day minimum and plan for at least three days. So for those of you at home, should have some sort of water source to keep on handling. Cell phone, again, chargers and backup batteries. Fire extinguisher, matches in a waterproof container. Next, next slide. Older adults, I mentioned prescriptions, extra eyeglasses, oxygen, mobility aids if they may need. Children, formula, baby food, toys, games. Doctor, either time while they're in a shelter or away from home. Or now without electricity, the kids are playing video games. They're not going to be able to play those during the power outage. Money, cash, have some cash on hand, be able to take it with you. ATMs may not work, power may be out, banks may be closed. Vehicles, if you know a storm's coming or we're in that time period of having storms being prevalent for the climate, don't let your car fuel tank get less than half the tank full. And in any case of like a hurricane where we've got a weak preparedness, we know it's coming toward us, fill up that car prior to the storm. Because as that storm comes through, you may not be able to find a gas station that's open or available to get gas from fuel. Stay weather aware. How can we get our information? Alerts and warnings are available to us. In Pickens County, you can text P C E C to 99411 and that's Pickens County Code Red. And that way, when we send out a Code Red notification, you'll get that straight to your cell phone, your home phone, if you still have a home landline. You can get it by text or you can get it by email or all of the above. That way you're staying weather aware with your alerts and warnings. Weather alert radios are still viable. If you have one of those at home, use those or battery powered or at least battery backup. Outdoor warning sirens, they are somewhat antiquated compared to some of the newer technology, but we still have them here in Pickens County. And just don't remember that they can't always be heard inside your home. Don't rely on hearing them inside your home. The newer homes are built with better insulation and it's harder to hear them and wake you up by that outdoor warning siren. Smart phone access is probably one of the best things to have today is a lot of the TV stations offer them for free. They'll alert you. I just downloaded one here recently and it'll pop up and say, there's a severe rainstorm coming in my area, there's lightning in my area, there's a thunderstorm warning in my area or watch. And it'll just, out of the blue, it'll just start talking. And then social media. I try to post everything we get from National Weather Service, alerts and warnings over to our social media page for Pickens County Emergency Management Homeland Security. So good place there. And I always like to close with something a little funny. This is watches and warnings, another way to think of it. If you're making tacos and you've got all the ingredients ready, that's a watch. If you've already got the taco made, that's a warning. And then last slide, one team picking strong, something I came up with after I hired down up here and I put that in our emails when we're preparing for things and we all, we all work good together and we make sure that we take care of business as quickly as possible after something does happen. So, thank you very much.
So the one question I have is, when is your vacation scheduled?
It is not between April and July.
We've had two major incidents occur in the last two years and both times was when our EMA Director was on vacation and out of town. And so our former assistant is the head of our public utilities as we've done a band and we've been piecing it together. So I just want to know when it is.
Unfortunately, this year it is later July.
Okay, all right. Good, good. I'm taking off too.
Hey, Mark, you mentioned up there the storm spotter, National Weather Service.
I did not, I did not. I didn't mention that. I wish I had.
You were at first in the beginning, but I was wondering, do you have any of those classes coming up that would be?
We don't have any scheduled. National Weather Service has already scheduled theirs. They only get like three live ones in this area this year, but they do have something online. And when those come available, I'll definitely try to send those out through the executive briefing. Sky warning storm training, watch training is training that you can take to educate you about the storms and what to look for. And then if you want to, it's involuntary, you can call the National Weather Service or contact them through email or text or through their website to let them know what you're seeing at home. That helps them because we're located in Pickens County and their radar for National Weather Service Atlanta is located in Peachtree Center, Peachtree City. The angle of the radar gets a little high as it crosses over Pickens County. So they don't actually see what's happening on the, can possibly happen on the ground because of the elevation of that beam from the radar. So they like to get information from ground truth. Somebody's on the ground seeing what's happening, who can call in and talk about that. Our amateur radio partners here in Pickens County, they are very good about setting up a radio net network and talking during a storm to talk about what they see and they will report that to us. So it's very good to have those storm spotters in the field who give you that, what we call ground truth, what's happening on the ground.
I was actually going to give you a hard time when you're talking about staying aware. You left off the 805 repeater from your list. That's the best way I know to get information.
Yes, we have a lot of amateur radio equipment in the county and the 805 amateur radio repeater is located on, I believe, a oak thorn mountain. And it has been one of the ones that National Weather Service uses in a linked network of many different repeaters for radio. And once they activate that, everybody in and most of the state can hear what's going on. It's very good stuff. Any other questions?
Tatum, you got any questions?
No, I'm good. That was excellent presentation.
Thank you.
So, Mark, if you want to customize that more to Pickens County, add milk and bread on your list.
Oh, yeah.
That's how you can tell.
That's another, that's another little funny thing I usually put in the presentation some of it. It's made this way. Is I grew up in Illinois and Georgia and every time weather looks bad, especially snow or ice, it's milk and bread.
Best thing to do.
Yeah, add eggs, you can at least add French toast.
Thank you, Mark.
And some beer and more beer.
So as I mentioned, we rearranged the order just a little bit when we were getting up and going, we were waiting on Eric to get here. One of the advantages of having a firm represent from the legal team is you get the whole team, so when one's not available, the other is. But this time it actually worked out well. Angie had said that Eric actually had helped draft the original ordinance that we're kind of looking at from another county, neighboring county to consider. And I know I'll introduce a little bit as to the background, as to why we're having the conversation. And it deals with private roads. When there are private roads that have been built in the past, they start to have problems that they didn't have an HOA or they didn't have the funds available. When those roads are then trying to be maintained, the people that went on them aren't able to maintain those roads. And they start wanting the county to come in and adopt. Well, the reason the ordinance was drafted is because if they took on and built it private and it didn't meet the county's standards, then it didn't have all of the capabilities necessary to be able to be adopted in this county road. So we'd ask, Angie was our attorney, to if she was aware of some other ordinances, some ways some other counties had done things involving something like a special tax district or some kind of way that the residents of those areas could find a way to bring it up to par. She had indicated, Dawson had fairly recently went through the process and adopted an ordinance that met that criteria, so provided us with a copy of the draft for us to- that met that criteria, so provided us with a copy of the draft for us to review and look over. And so we wanted to bring that up in a work session to kind of discuss the need for, I know we've got about six different communities or roads, areas that have approached us and reached out about ways that they could look at that. Some fairly small ranging of the amount of work that would be required, being less than a hundred thousand dollars to get those and then some well in excess of a million dollars to get those up to par for an entire subdivision. So we've got a very broad problem here, I think my stop room, Commissioner Tippin, son of the county, because he's the one that seems to get these the most whenever the calls start to come in. Tatum's got a couple, but not as many. But we wanted to kind of bring that up and then not just to talk about the ordinance as a whole, but the things that we have to, the very real implications of if this were to ever go into place and be approved, they've got to be paid for upfront in some way, even if a special tax district's created to collect money over a period of time, you've still got to be able to fund the project and to kind of lift those options. So I don't want you to go through a line by line, I know that the board has kind of been going back and forth, but I may have gave way too simple of a summary, if you could chime in with a little better summary.
Yes, sir, well, I think that was great. So the reason that we came up with this in Dawson County is the same situation you were talking about. I think there were situations, I think there was one that was top of mind when I was doing this, it was a subdivision that had been, you know, seventy percent of the way completed and then the developer's gone, you're left with roads that had never received their final servicing. People have been driving on them for ten years or so and they're starting to fail pretty substantially. And because the final layer of the road was never put on, the road could not have been dedicated to the county at the time and it still couldn't because it doesn't meet county standards, it's not up to what the county needs. So it's a catch twenty-two, the county by law can't maintain a private road, but it also can't accept the dedication of a private road that's not up to county standards. So what do you do in that situation? When the property owners would like to get this into county hands so that the county can maintain it going forward, but it's really hard for a group of people, whether they're in a subdivision or they share a private road, how do they organize themselves to get to the point where they've got this shared public private road up to county standards? So the ordinance is designed to facilitate that local coordination to get the adjacent property owners all working off of the same playbook, all working together to understand the situation and what needs to be done. And it bounces back and forth between involvement from the property owners and involvement from the county in this four step process. And then at the end of that process, the board commissioners will be presented with deeds dedicating the, whatever right of way is necessary from the property owners, completed petition from at least seventy-five percent of the property owners. And at that point, the board of commissioners has everything it needs. What you can do is then create a special tax district and you could either levy a one-time tax or assessment against all of the properties and that's payable all at once that tax year. And so that's difficult. The easier option would be to create a special district and then impose a military each year. And so you set a five-year target horizon each year when you levy your military for the county, you would set a military within that tax district with the goal of generating enough revenue that year to get you one-fifth of the way into funding the project. And at some point, when you believe that the funding is secure enough, you could then go out and actually begin work on the project. But that's the, that's the process in a nutshell. And then to summarize the process itself, it begins with the, a single applicant from the subdivision or the street comes and says to the county, I'd like to initiate this process. So all they have to do is, they have to, you know, in plain terms, say what they want. We want such and such road paid from here to here. And the Public Works Director or whoever is designated as the liaison there will put together a preliminary petition that advises whoever it comes across of what's being proposed. What we're proposing is a new tax district, so you're going to be paying for this on the front end. That's the first thing everyone needs to be advised on before they start signing away to it. But, and then during that process, once the preliminary petition has been issued and the property owners gathering signatures, hopefully we have a general idea about what the project costs. So that's all that the Public Works Director needs to provide at that point is, there's a general idea of how much we would expect this project to cost. We put that general estimate on the preliminary petition and say, you know, let's assume that we're going to have a five-year special district, it's going to cost this much, so we know for a one hundred thousand dollar property, it would mean this much added to your tax bill each year for five years. So we give them the basic information and if the property owners are in support and everyone signs it, it comes back and then we go into a more, a more serious footing of, okay, the property owners have been advised, they're educated on this, they're still serious. So let's look at what else we need to do. Do we need to go out and have any engineering drawings done to get to the next level of detail? Because before we take it to the board of commissioners, we need to know exactly what this project is going to entail. Do we need right of way? And if we're going to need right of way, how are we going to get the right of way? Are we going to need construction drawings? Before we actually get to that phase, that's something that would need to be decided. And then at the end, like I said, a final petition will be issued and that will have a more accurate summary of what the costs are after these preliminary studies have been done. And if you get the same seventy-five percent of the signatures, then it goes for the board to decide whether or not to create the district. And, you know, this process, this was, one of the things that was surprising, I guess, or not expected, was that this was something that the board of commissioners could have done all along. You always have the power to create a special tax district and you don't need people to sign a petition for you to do this. The board has the power to create a district and say, we're going to fund capital improvements in this area and we'll put a special military on that. But if you're going to do something for such a specific purpose, then it's good to have the public involved and really involved on the front end. So that when they get their tax bill, there's no surprise, what are we getting taxed for? This is something that everyone has bought into, the whole community has had a chance to debate amongst themselves whether or not they really want to make the investment. And so everyone goes into it with full knowledge of what they're getting into and a realistic understanding of the timeline involved as well.
So I've got two questions, kind of more statements slash questions. One would be, when this was put in place there, and a seventy-five percent is somewhat an arbitrary, just to come up with what that minimum standard, but at the final, when you're, when you're actually going to implement the tax, that means up to a fourth of the people that live in that community could have been against it and then had that tax placed on top. Was that a consideration to make that number higher or was it more of a fear that we'd kill the project if we went to the hundred percent?
Yeah, well, I think the reason why it's not a hundred percent is just the fear that there are some people who are just not, maybe they live out of state and this is a rental property and they can't be bothered to sign the petition. I think the original format was we were looking for fifty percent and then two-thirds and I think seventy-five ended up being just an arbitrary number that they picked for both the preliminary and the final petition. But I think the thinking was for having such a high threshold even at the preliminary stage, is once you've got the preliminary petition done, it does shift the onus onto the county side to put the gears into motion and start coming up with some really specific plans about what you're doing. And if you can't get support from seventy-five percent of the people, then let's not waste county resources on that if you've got another project every year where the people are fully in support of it. But I think your point's well taken if, let's say you had seventy-five percent, but you knew twenty-five percent were opposed to it. I think the board of commissioners would certainly have the discretion to say, we're not comfortable lifting a tax with so much support, even though it's only, you know, one-fourth opposed as opposed to three-fourths in favor. If the tax is substantial, then that would be enough for you to say, you know, one-fourth of the people oppose this, produce substantial tax and we're just not going to implement it.
And just view it on a case by case of anything from that seventy-five to the hundred.
Right.
The other question, and I think you kind of answered it because you were presenting it in a way of collecting prior to the expenditure. But at the same time, I mean, in the last five years, asphalt's gone up eighty percent. So it's hard to predict what is going to be the cost in five years if you levy the tax based on the current estimate, five years from now, that current estimate may, which I know the last five years have probably been historically way higher than what had been there before, but that has been the case. So you just continue to collect until you reach that point. But then can those roads wait five more years before something's done? So has that, has that been something that they've encountered up to this point of having to extend prior to the collection being meaningful?
No, it's so new, we've got a couple of districts that are in the preliminary phase where they've gone out there, they're doing that work and they're trying to build up the community's support, but no one's gone past that yet.
Okay.
But the way it's set up is that you're creating a tax district and there's going to be a new military every year. And the purpose of the project doesn't change, even if the costs of the project go up. And that is a risk. So let's say in years one and two, you levy a military and it's reasonable and it gets you two-fifths of the way there and then we see another sharp spike in the costs. Well, now instead of two-fifths the way there, it looks like we're back to one-fifth of the way there, what do we do? And, you know, each year, the board of commissioners, the same way you set a military for the county, you're going to have to think about this district and say, well, based on what's happening, what military is appropriate? If we're still on target to get this, then we're going to need a higher military than what we've had in the past. And, you know, that's not going to be welcome news to anybody, but that's the way that the process goes is each year, you have a new discussion about how much revenue you need, what the target project deadline or timeline looks like and how much of the tax you're going to levy in order to meet those goals.
So I have a question real quick. So what you're saying is if we did implement this, we could say, I'm just going to give you a number, it's going to be two hundred dollars added to your tax bill and then we go back and we can say later, well, actually, sorry, it's three hundred dollars we're adding to it, is that what you're saying? We can do that if we have to?
Yes, sir, the way the, in the petition is, the way we've drawn it up, it's careful to let people know that these are just cost estimates and we don't know what the cost is going to be and there's no guarantee that you're only going to be paying X number of dollars. But I can tell you, if I were voting for something like this, that's something that I would definitely think about is, if you're not able to fund it all upfront, then there is a risk that the project goes off and this ends up costing more than you want. But I think the reality is, is that the situation is just not a good situation. And so there's not going to be an easy solution to it, there's.
This is the only solution that could be provided because currently, nobody has any option unless they can come up with all the money at one time. This gives a way that not only do you come up with the money to get it, but it's automatically going to be adopted as part of the process. So I think, even though it doesn't sound pretty and it's an increase in tax, but it is the one way and it's a tax that goes away once it's completed, it's not like that, that knowledge would remain.
That's true.
Are there issues that you foresee in somebody that sells their property during that collection period, is that tax rate, it stays with the, goes with the property?
Yeah, so the district is based on the parcels, just like your county tax districts are. So if someone buys into the property, they're going to know that this is in a special district and there's going to be a higher military associated with that. So that's something that theoretically could affect hires willingness to come into the property. But at the other end, once you get through this, you end up with a better property than what you had before because in its current state, you've got to try to sell the property knowing that there's a private road that needs a lot of work. And you get through this process and at the end, what you'll have is a well-maintained public road. So again, there's, there's give and take here, there's no easy solution, but I think this is a pretty good one. I particularly like the fact that it involves so much community involvement on the front end, because one of the issues is, is just local organizing. If a lot of people share the road and they all share sentiment that they'd like to have something done about it, well, this provides a really concrete path for them to follow to work amongst themselves towards, you know, a real concrete end that they can get to, whereas before it's just a lot of people talking, this provides the path.
Alright, so I may have had a misunderstanding throughout this whole process, but it's always been my understanding that we can't spend county tax dollars on a private road. So along what you just explained there, there comes a point where we have to get pre-construction engineering quotes and all that stuff. So who pays for that prior to those petitions being signed and that special tax district being created?
So the way the ordinance is set up is the Public Works Director, whoever is in charge, would go back to the applicants. And would go back to the applicants and say, we need this study done before we can move forward. And then the burden is going to be on the applicants to do some ground funding and come back. Now, if you had a situation where you wanted to know if, you know, if we had the funds available, could we put them towards this? But I think we could find a way, you know, maybe we change the order and create the special district for the purposes of investigating whether or not we are going to create this project.
As an option.
Right, just as an option. And then you could use that special district to fund the initial survey and the initial engineering work and then convert that into one of the special districts that we're talking about here that's actually going to fund the project. But you're right, if it's still a private road, it's still private property, you know, the county can't go out and spend its money to figure out what it would do to improve that property, the same way the county can go out and, you know, get construction estimates for a person's home if they wanted to do it in addition to it. It has to be public property before you can spend county funds on it.
Well, I know we've ran into the situation where different contractors that have done work for the county before have went and gave a free estimate on what it would cost to do it, so there wasn't funds expended. We went out to a private road recently because they wanted to know what their options may be and he didn't charge just to go give a ballpark estimate. So in that preliminary stage, I think the estimate is something that we can work with vendors in a lot of situations, but even in one of those, the what's underneath the ground, he couldn't estimate, he could tell you what he could tell, but he said there's more problems underneath that could actually cause this to increase. It's a very ballpark estimate down that with an initial preliminary.
Yeah, and you know, he could get away with even that ballpark estimate and I think in a lot of cases, you know, the situation I was talking about earlier where, excuse me, hold on, where you have a road that was just not completed, but you know sort of what was there and the initial road bed was laid. So you can get a pretty reliable estimate about what it's ultimately going to come back to cost to bring this thing up to standard. And I would say in most cases, that would be enough to go ahead and create the district and then once the funding becomes available at that point, we're on go. So that we get the funding, we go out and we have the engineering work done and we start that bidding process. You could do that. If it was a more complex project where, you know, your Public Works Director's saying, you know, I'm not comfortable ballparking it, ball parking this, there are enough unknowns here to where we would be wildly off unless we went and had some more work done. And we're going to be in a situation where we're going to sell the public on something that we can't deliver at the cost we're promising, so that's not a situation we'd want to be in. Before we go forward on that project, we're going to say, you as the applicant, you need to come up with a way to fund a more intensive study before we go out.
And I think we've got both those examples, or two of the main ones that have approached us that led to us wanting to have this conversation and discuss this, so.
I got one more. This is probably a current question, but if a new developer builds a subdivision and roads, they have a two-year wait period before the county can go in and inspect it and ultimately adopt it, right? So if we go through this process and we oversee that construction from the start, do we still make them go through that two years or when we're finished, we already? make them go through that two years or when we're finished, we already have maintenance of it?
I would suggest doing the two-year regardless because that's kind of like your warranty period. And, you know, if you have a problem, you know, it shows up in that time period, you know, you get the, whoever constructs it, you go back in and fix it, you know, before we take it on. That's the whole idea of that two-year.
Okay, so they're, the warranty of the work recovered is not so much?
It, it's kind of a warranty from, from the, you know, when it's on the developer, you know, it's kind of a warranty from them. You know, in two years' time, you know, we make sure that that road is kind of for us to take.
With what we currently have in the ordinance for a new one, that's a hundred percent accurate. I think what he's, these roads are already established, the homes are already all built and there's no developer in the picture.
Right, there's no contact. So somebody's got to ultimately be responsible for that. That's what I was trying to, I don't know if that's the actual contractor we hire, if we can hold them to that two years or?
Or with the moment it becomes the need and minimum county specs, it's, it's, goes through the process for adoption.
You know, if, you know, like I said, if we're watching it, you know, as we would be on something like this, I don't see no reason why we would wait.
Yeah.
Well, the way this is set up, and again, if you keep spending money, that's a project that's not county-owned, the county takes the right of way of getting with this process.
So it technically becomes ours as it's being built.
Yeah, it is yours. The county is the one hiring the contractor. And so the, the contractor would actually owe the warranty to the county, whatever you negotiate with them on, on how that process is going to work.
Okay. Yeah, that's all my questions.
And I think it's still early. I know we're in the work session just to get it out, to, to discuss and to look at and, and start to continue talking to constituents both on the east and west side of the county and I'll continue to talk from ours and talking with staff. I know Kirk had shared some, he read through the first draft and shared some, some concerns because our public works is structured a little bit different than Dawson. He's more of a in-the-field supervisor as the director of public works versus theirs is more of an administrative role. So there may be some other ways that we need to shift and adjust. And I think working with the Tax Assessor's Office on implementation and how that would, how that would work, because I'm watching him have a mini stroke as we're having the conversation right now. So I think we've, we've got quite a few more hoops that we need to jump through before we get it to a draft phase to then bring it before the board. But I think we've definitely got the, the food for thought. And we've got plenty of, of neighborhoods throughout the, the county that are looking for a way that this can happen. We're not trying to push people into a special tax district, we're trying to create an opportunity to where one could exist. It's not a desire of us to tax any more than what's ever required. So I, I think making sure that's clear from the start is we're not trying to find a way to increase taxes, but we are trying to find a way that how can we make some of these things right? Because it is eventually going to affect the ability for a fire truck to get to a house or a sheriff's deputy to get to a house. I mean, those days will arrive if they continue to erode fast enough, in my, my opinion.
I have one other little question. I, I doubt this would ever happen, but what would happen if there was extra money left over? Do we just redistribute it back to the homeowners in an equitable fashion? I seriously doubt that would actually happen, I guess it would always be under, but just out of curiosity.
If it's overcollected?
Yeah, so if it's overcollected, I, I think what you would do with it is you would issue a refund.
Back to that district.
Yeah, the, the board commissioners has the, the power to issue tax refunds on its own volition. Sometimes taxpayers come and ask for a refund, but the county could do it. You know, alternatively, if, you know, if, if there were ongoing or other project costs that were in that same district, you could use the, the funds for that as well.
Okay. Okay. I think it's a ton of good food for thought and I, I appreciate you being willing to come over and, and walk us through. Now, it's been, I know we've all read, read through the ordinance and, and have emailed back and forth with, with Angie on just different questions. I think Tatum broke the record on questions on the, the first draft that she sent over. So we've, we've looked at it, but we've never actually been able to sit down in a public setting and discuss the, the possibility of getting it created. And I think this gets that ball rolling so that we can then kind of get those questions all answered, picking them back. Unless you guys feel differently.
I'm, I'm excited about it. I've got to email somebody tonight when I get home with a note saying how this went.
No, I like this a lot. It's a great idea.
Okay. Your initial concern?
No, I'm all right.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, you're not in here. I was pointing at Mr. Dobbs, so he, he's giving me a look, so I was, I was going to go ahead and get his initial concern.
You know, I've answered one of my main questions. At the end, it would become a county road.
Yeah.
Because it's going to meet all the standards. Biggest thing that I see, we have so many young homeowners with their mortgages and their escrows, it will be greatly affected. Then we've got a lot of retired people also to end of the spectrum that are going to be in different situations. That's probably the biggest thing I see from implementation on there, how it's going to affect them. But the fact that you're going to make it become a county road at the end, meeting county specs was one of my concerns, so I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Oh, I thought the one more thing.
Potentially not asking for your take right now. I'll just say.
Um, the roads, since the roads will become public, if a gated community wanted to do this, they would have to remove their gates, correct? I'm guessing is what happened?
That is correct.
Okay. Hey, does anyone have a question?
All right. Well, if we have no more questions, we will go ahead and adjourn the work session and thank everybody for coming. I know it's a little different format than we typically have had, but I think that being able to discuss ordinances and trying to get them prepared to, to be able to go into place is very helpful. So, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it.